Thank you very much for remembering that. It is six thirty-one and I'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee to Order. It is Wednesday, May fifteenth, and we are meeting remotely, so I am going to hand this over to Dr. Burnham.
Good evening, everyone. As a preliminary matter, this is Dr. Burnham, Superintendent of Schools. I will do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chair, Mrs. Carol Ashambo?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Mr. Brian Leighton?
Yes.
Secretary, Ms. Laura Kelly is not with us. Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
I do not see a student representative this evening. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Recording Secretary, Ms. Courtney Fuller?
Yes, I'm here.
Business Manager, Mr. Michael Cassidy?
Yes.
Word Language Teacher, Ms. Tammy York?
Yes.
Science Teacher, Dawn Garen? Don't see Dawn on the meeting yet. And Class of 2015 Advisor, Ms. Haley Atori?
Yes.
And I'll turn it back to you, Mrs. Ashambo.
Alrighty. In accordance with the requirements, the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel and streaming on Facebook Live at a later time. And this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, public meetings may be conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website, on the COVID-19 Information Center page, accessed through the town manager's webpage, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference, video conference, via Zoom app, Facebook Live, etc., is posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that you take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. I will ask other members for any comment by name. Please hold until your name is called. Remember to mute your phone or computer when you are out speaking. Speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Each vote taken this evening will be conducted by roll call vote. On our agenda, it states that we are saluting the flag, but we have no flags. We are all in different places, so we are probably going to just skip that this evening. And then move on to public comment. The school committee welcomes comments from the public. Comments addressing topics under the scope and authority of the school committee are welcome at either public comment section. Please remember, this is public comment, not discussion, and limit your comments to three minutes. Each public comment section has a maximum of ten minutes. Comments about individual students are prohibited by state and federal law. If anyone has a public comment, from the board first, are there any public comments from the board? Seeing none, then I, oh, Mr. Beardmore, did you have a public comment?
Unmuted. I just wanted to acknowledge the questions that were directed to me personally by Mr. Plant last week. I do not intend to answer those questions in any detail this evening. I did receive some additional information that I requested, as all the committee members did earlier this week, but with the storm, I was unable to organize my thoughts, and I intend to do so at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Beardmore. And so then, Mrs. Plant, did you have a public comment to see more?
Hi, my name is Lisa Plant and I live at 490 Lancaster Ave. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This committee and the administration have consistently said the social emotional learning curriculum is directly linked to the academic achievement of all kids. Thus, all students must participate. At the February first meeting, Mr. Skellum Breen said, "Every educational dollar is important and a consistent review of the programs and curriculum is necessary, and if the data shows there should be a course change, then a reevaluation would need to be done." First, the article "An Empirical Basis for Linking SEL to Academic Performance", published by Contemporary Educational Psychology in 2019, has directly refuted the claims of this committee in the Castle Study of 2003, linking SEL to academic attainment, stating, and I quote, "SEL did not predict academic attainment," end quote. These two studies were provided as evidence by this committee in support of SEL. Now, let's take a look at the data, but keep this in mind. The Castle Study, which was a study of hundreds of studies, had one important data point. Seventy-five percent of all interventions had a duration of one year or less and were not a mandatory K-12 program. And while the high-risk students did perform better academically, the no-risk students showed no statistically significant benefit from an SEL program. Also, the data from the recently released report cards for Lunenburg and the Turkey Hill Elementary School indicate that student achievement, as measured by the MCAS test results, Turkey Hill, for English, Math, and Science, had significant increases in students partially and/or not meeting expectations. That is pretty unfortunate to see. Also, the advanced coursework completion indicates only forty-eight point seven percent of Lunenburg's eleventh and twelfth grade students have completed at least one advanced course, which is sixteen point two percent less than Massachusetts' state average of sixty-four point nine. Further, according to the 2022 Accountability Data for Districts and Schools, the accountability percentile for Turkey Hill is thirty-five percent, which means sixty-five percent of all other elementary schools in Massachusetts are performing better than Lunenburg. This takes COVID out of the equation, as it's a measure of the performance of all schools. So how do our neighbors compare, you might ask? It's quite shocking. Virtually all elementary schools in a budding and neighboring towns scored higher than Lunenburg, including Pittsburgh. Three of its elementary schools all scored higher. Lemonster, four, three out of the four schools scored higher, including Ayer, Shirley, Lancaster, Ashby, Pepperell, Townsend, Groton, Dunstable. In conclusion, the Lunenburg schools have been in a steady state of decline since the superintendent took office. We are also four years into a failed ideological SEL program, and there has been no academic gains realized. In fact, one could argue, based on the data, SEL is doing more harm than good, and COVID cannot be used as an excuse. Based on Lunenburg's own report cards, there should have been at least a short-term bump up in performance, yet it was all negative. So here it is. Is this committee going to continue denying the data? Or is it going to conduct a reevaluation and change course? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Plant. All right. So are there any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we will continue with our agenda. And the next item is the chair's report. I wish to thank everyone for their flexibility in dealing with changes to our scheduled meetings. We will not hold the public hearing this evening for the budget, as not everyone in Lunenburg has internet access this evening. Our public hearing on the budget will be held remotely on Wednesday, March twenty-second, at six thirty prior to our meeting with the Finance Committee. We will not be meeting with the Finance Committee tomorrow evening. So that, those are my comments this evening. And next, we have minutes from-
Carol, quick clarification, just on the budget hearing next week.
Sure thing.
Run that as a hybrid meeting from Town Hall, or what, how, what, what are we doing there?
I, I think we are doing a completely Zoom meeting.
Okay, so it's a fully remote but public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, all right, just wanted to be clear.
That's the, it's posted.
And the Finance Committee meeting, to be clear, is? Is when?
The Finance Committee is going to be, it begins at seven, but our portion of the Finance Committee probably isn't right at seven. We are firming that up, but I believe it is at seven thirty, as that was the missed meeting time, so we would have time for this public hearing prior to the Finance Committee meeting, because the Finance Committee will want to hear about our approved budget, which we can't do till we have the public hearing.
Is the, is the Finance Committee meeting remotely as well?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
So what we would end up doing is, is zooming from a location close there, too.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on that? All right, with regards to minutes, I saw we had three sets of minutes in the folder, but that last set didn't make the agenda. So I am thinking that we probably shouldn't vote on the minutes for February fifteenth, because I just, it's not on the agenda. So I would rather take the two sets that are on the agenda, which is December seventh and March first. So has everybody had a chance to take a look at those? And is there, are there any comments about either of those sets of meeting, the minutes? Then, does someone have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the, where are the dates? Sorry, Carol.
The dates are December seventh, 2022, and March first, 2023.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the December seventh meeting and the minutes for the March first meeting.
And a second, please?
Second.
All right, then a roll call vote, please, Dr. Burnham.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes. Alrighty. Thank you. Next, on the agenda, we have line item transfers, but I do not believe we have any. Is that correct?
None this evening.
Okay, so that's fast. Next, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
We'll keep this brief as well this evening. Our next facilitated team meeting for the Family School Partnership Program is scheduled for Monday. Network upgrades from Comcast upgrade to fiber optic at TCP will be happening next week, scheduled for Tuesday. Regarding snow removal and power outages, we had some significant challenges with snow removal during this last storm. The snow was very wet and very heavy. We have two plows, and we broke one of the two plows, so it was very challenging to keep up. Thankfully, the DPW was able to assist with a bigger plow after they were complete with their cleanup. Last night, power was restored to TCP and to the middle high school. As of this morning, Turkey Hill Elementary was back up online, and we've been told by Unitil to anticipate that the primary school will be back up by eight this evening. So the hope is, all buildings will have power and school will open at the normal time tomorrow. Again, a great big thank you to the DPW and to our Police and Fire Department for their assistance in getting an update from Unitil as to when the power might be back on. A few reminders. We are not having the school department budget presentation at the Finance Committee meeting tomorrow evening. There is no meeting scheduled for tomorrow. That will occur next week on Wednesday, March twenty-second. The high school course registration closes this Friday, March seventeenth, and this Friday, schools are closed for staff professional development. And lastly, the kindergarten readiness meeting is scheduled for tomorrow evening, six thirty PM via Zoom. Meeting links were provided to all the new kindergarten registrants. Anybody that needs access to that can contact the school, the primary school. And again, one more reminder that April third, our registration opens for Extended Day and Early Learning Center for the fall. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Alrighty, thank you very much. I just took a quick look. I do not see a student representative on the meeting this evening, so should one pop in, we will get back to that. So we will go now to new business, the initial approval for the Galapagos trip.
We have Dawn Garen. We have Dawn Garen with us tonight, so I'll turn it over to Dawn.
Hi, thanks for having me. Dawn Garen from Lunenburg High School. This is, I think, probably my fourth or fifth meeting trying to get permission to come or take kids to the Galapagos Islands. I'm not sure if you guys are all looking at the heading of the paperwork that I submitted, you know, June twentieth was the trip we were supposed to take. We didn't even attempt it on the twenty-twenty-one year. Last year, we were twenty-five hours away from our flight when they canceled it on us from civil unrest in, in Quito, Ecuador. So I'm here yet again with fewer students, but still just being stubborn and trying to get whoever wants to come to come to the Galapagos with us. So Mrs. Abatini and I are still slated to go together. We have five students that are hoping to go as well.
Alrighty. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Darren? I'm Garen, sorry.
That's okay.
I'm not seeing any questions. We have talked about this before. I assume that the trip, since it's the same paperwork, that the trip is the same, and your five students are as excited as the others were about possibly going. And I don't have any questions. I just commend you for your perseverance.
Thank you.
So could I have a motion to give initial approval to this trip, please? Mr. Schoenbrini?
I'll make a motion to approve the Galapagos trip.
And a second, please?
Second.
All right, then a roll call vote.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes. Wonderful. Good luck.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
All right, thank you for coming. Next, we have, under new business, a request for class of 2015 funds.
So I'll invite the class advisor from the class of 2015, Ms. Haley Atori, to make that-
Hi, Haley Atori from Lunenburg High School. I am, I'm here to request the funds to be released. We do a scholarship every year, and we are gonna move that funds from the high school to a bank account so that we can continue the scholarship year after year.
It's very generous of your students to continue to invest in following students that come after them. Does anybody have any questions about this, Mr. Beardmore?
So first of all, congratulations on having a class here that graduated almost eight years ago and still has a current balance of almost sixty-seven hundred dollars. I can tell you that they did substantially better than the class of nineteen ninety. My, my question is, who is actually taking responsibility for these funds? Normally, when we approve to transfer funds, there's an organization or a person that these funds are being transferred to and is taking responsibility for them. And that was not clear to me from your letter, if, if, if we know who, who this is going to.
Um, so my understanding is that I need to put it into a bank account in the class of 2015's name, and that is what I plan on doing.
Okay, um, so my hesitation here is, is that I, my doubt is that the class of 2015 of Lunenburg High School is a legal entity. And there, whether it is or not, there's, assuming that it isn't, there should be a person who is a custodian of that, and there should be some kind of organization, organizational form that says these, this is how the funds are intended to be used. And I understand that your, your letter briefly outlines that, but I, I just, I'm very uneasy releasing funds to what I don't believe to be a legal entity.
If I could interject, Haley, do you have two students who have stepped up to manage this bank account?
I was not aware that I needed to do that, so I will reach out to former 2015 class members. We didn't find out, well, I didn't personally find out about this until about 2019, and I don't have email contacts, so I will try my very best to find people. I'm just doing what I was told to do.
I apologize. There could be precedent that does otherwise on this sort of thing. I just, me personally, and perhaps the other members feel differently than I do. I just, I, I find it to be just a little, a little outside of the bounds of what I would normally do.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah, so I had concerns over this the, the last few times that we've done this. It was, it wasn't a very specific officer, like I would have thought it was like the president or maybe the president and the vice president, but it would seem to be any officer that was in the class the last few times that we've had it, which it may be a good idea to have a policy potentially that we have it consistently. Maybe it's just any of the officers, or maybe it's the president, vice president, but that was my concern.
I would jump in and say that as someone that was her senior class president and never touched anything from Burlington High School class nineteen seventy-five since, it, it wouldn't matter to me that it be the president and the vice president or whoever, but you do need a couple of names on the bank account and people that were active in the class so that there's a checking balance in the use of the funds that, that I would think we needed.
Dr. Burnham, may I speak to this for a moment?
Yes, go ahead, Liz.
Okay. So typically, what happens with this, and this is something that the procedure for this was made several years ago. Typically, what happens is, once a class is going to graduate, they are told that they need to assign two class officers, normally the president and the treasurer, to be able to handle this. And to, and once they put the money into the bank account, they, the class treasurer or the president is assigned to this. They're assigned a, it is under the class name, so in this case, it would be under class of 2015 to open the separate bank account. In, typically, it was at Workers Credit Union. Sometimes it's held in other bank accounts in Lunenburg, but it normally is the president and the class treasurer that do this. And they work directly with Karen Broschu at Town Hall, the Director of Finance, to be able to set up a vendor number for this. A check is cut, and then they deposit the funds within that new bank account.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson.
Sure.
Any other questions? So I, I would think that what we need to do is we need to have a couple of names of whose names are going on this before those funds can be released. Am I speaking in the way that the committee would wish?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Okay, so I, I think that's where we are. So sorry that wasn't made clear to you. And I'm sure that someone will help you out to figure out how to get ahold of them and figure out who are the best people to do it. You know, obviously, it, it's when kids first graduate, they're right there, but you've got a few years hence, and your class offices may be scattered all over the country, so we'll have to figure something out, but I'm sure it can be figured out. So we thank you for taking care of this.
Thank you.
All right, and is anything else on this? Then we will continue with the personnel report. Mr. Cassidy, I presume?
Correct.
Good evening, everyone. My Cassidy, HR Director, in front of the committee tonight for a acceptance is the quarterly Personnel Report. Two notable employees in the report are two retirees from the Lunenburg Primary School, Sherri Flynn and Sheila Bellata. And Sherri is a pre-K teacher, twenty years. By the time she retires, she'll have twenty years in the Lunenburg Public Schools, and Miss Bellata will have nineteen years in Lunenburg Public Schools. So there'll be a ceremony toward the end of the year, recognizing our retirees, so they will be added to the list. We've had three resignations, and we had nine new employees hired since the last personnel report. I'll turn it back over to the chair for any questions or comments.
Sure. Um, we'd like to thank all of our, all these people that gave time to Lunenburg Public Schools, particularly the two retirees that have spent so much time with, with our children. We thank them very much, and we're looking forward to celebrating their careers at the end of the school year. And does anyone else have any questions? Then we need just to accept this personnel report. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, in a second.
I'll second.
Thank you very much, and a roll call vote.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, under old business, we have final approval for the Italy-Greece trip, so that would be Mrs. York, I'm assuming?
That's correct.
Mrs. York, we're all envious. We all wanted to go.
I know, it's exciting. Yep, so I'm here to ask for final approval for our trip, which departs on April thirteenth, returning on April twentieth. The only real change to the information that I gave you a little bit over a year ago is that the light that they ended up having to give us is going to be on that Thursday morning rather than Thursday evening, so we will need to miss the full day on Thursday, the thirteenth, and then I believe it's a half-day PD day on the Friday. Initially, we thought we'd, we'd be in school on the Thursday. ACIS insists that they did everything that they could to make a later flight, but we have to fly to Atlanta first, and then from Atlanta to Athens. Everything else, I think, is in the packet that I sent you, so it's, our final numbers are thirty-five students, four chaperones, five additional parents that are coming along, and I put the price range depending on when they signed up. You know, they'll be over forty-one hundred to just over forty-five hundred, depending on their level of insurance that they purchase and everything, and that is going to cost each student fifty-two dollars for the bus to the airport. for the bus to the airport and back.
Sounds wonderful. Um, does anybody have any questions for Mrs. York? I'm not seeing any, so if we are all set, could I have a motion for final approval for this trip to Greece and Italy?
So moved.
And a second, please?
A second.
All right, and a roll call vote.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Ashambo?
Yes. Terrific, have a wonderful trip.
Thank you very much.
Um, now we go on to the superintendent's recommended budget.
So I'll ask Mr. Cassidy to join me for this presentation.
Dr. Burnham, if I could, before we get to the slides, uh, I would, I'd like to give an update uh, on the budget, this is, this information, hopefully, uh, can you see the uh, the detail?
Yes.
This is, this is information that's uh, in a memorandum uh, to the, the school committee. And um, so over the last uh, two months, we've been uh, giving periodic updates to the school committee on the budget that was provided at the first school committee meeting in January. Uh, some of those unknowns became known, and we, and we made, uh, we finally made those adjustments. Uh, what you're seeing here, and once again, this, this should be uh, on our website and certainly uh, something that can be talked about at our, the, at the budget hearing, is the, going back to that, that uh, January budget, these are the original line items uh, that were budgeted, and now we're, we're making changes to them. So, um, I think it's, I think it's important to share this information. I can speak to it if you would, um, let's see if I can. So, uh, what, so the technology change, uh, we took a reduction there, that, uh, that money is going toward uh, supporting the um, uh, services of uh, a consultant to fulfill our IT director services. As I just mentioned in the, um, in my last prev, uh, my last report, we had two retirees at the primary school, a kindergarten teacher and a special ed teacher, so we made those adjustments. Uh, the increases to our uh, technology uh, contracted services. And then finally, the uh, we had budgeted our uh, insurance at eight percent, it ultimately came in at a six point two percent, which was a significant savings. And then finally, just to, to kind of round out the, the few thousand, we uh, we identified some uh, possible savings in uh, the new furniture budget at the primary and at, uh, at the elementary school. Um, just to let you know, uh, if, if there's surplus funds toward the end of the year, next year, or, or even during the year, we'll, we'll look at replenishing those uh, furniture accounts to make those uh, schools whole. So, um, I just wanted to share that information with you and the public, because we, we had a, we had an outstanding document, we've made some changes, and there should, there, there, there's a new budget that's shared on our website right now, so, but these are the specific changes, not a lot, which is good. Uh, we didn't, but uh, as I said, the, the knowns became known, excuse me, the unknowns became known, and we made, made those adjustments. Thank you, Dr. Burnham, I'll, I'll um, move forward on the presentation. Give me a second.
All right, so this evening we will present to you our final recommended FY twenty-four budget. Again, our budget uh, is aligned to execute on the mission and the vision of the schools. Um, we leave this slide in and, and several other slides that we will uh, quickly pass over through this presentation this evening uh, for the benefit of the public, uh, so that it is a standalone uh, document. We also align the budget uh, to continue to execute on the strategy for continuous improvement in the four uh, priority areas around transforming teaching and learning, communication and operations, cultivating climate and culture, equity, access, opportunity, and achievement for all students. We had provided you some uh, background uh, context and data when we presented to you in January. You have seen all of the uh, mandates and reporting requirements previously, uh, you'll note that we did add um, the discipline law change uh, to this list for this year. We always provide our student enrollment numbers. Um, these numbers are as of uh, Oc- October first reporting to the state. Um, we, our, our actual enrollment is up from, from this number, but this is the number. Um, the October first number is what the state uses for their chapter seventy funding formula. Class sizes. We always provide this information as well. These are updated numbers for homeschool uh, as of March tenth. And we always include the uh, high-level summary of the MCAS data for each school, um, math and ELA. Our performance against the state as well as um, the different uh, academic performance levels of the students at each grade in each content area. As you know, uh, we're also gathering additional local assessment data. Um, we bring you reports on those benchmark assessments. This year you have seen the October presentation of the MCAS data, but also our local assessments. Uh, we presented to you the winter benchmark in February, and we will be bringing to you uh, a report on the assessment, the final end-of-year reassessment, uh, assessment in June. These are updated numbers uh, for special education as of March tenth. Number of students on IEPs and the number of reevals that are part of uh, the process for qualifying initially for uh, an IEP or um, remaining on an IEP at the end of a three-year period. We've also updated our five oh four data as of March tenth. Right now we have a hundred and fifty-two students district-wide on a five oh four plan. We also have provided you updated numbers as of March tenth uh, for the referrals at each school uh, through the Behavioral Health Support Team. And here's the uh, the grant information as well from, from this year. Mr. Cassidy, anything to say on this slide?
No, nothing has changed. I um, still waiting for uh, information on the school health grant and the um, and uh, excuse me, the workforce, workforce investment uh, program grant to see if there's any uh, new funding for that.
And then this is the process that we use. Again, uh, we develop a budget designed to meet the needs of students and a budget that aligns with the strategy for continuous improvement objectives. We don't need to walk through all of this process, uh, we did outline this process when we presented in January. And we did add information relative to the process for February and early March as well as mid-March. And now we get to the recommended budget. Mr. Cassidy, do you want to comment on this slide?
Uh, I mean, I can, I can take over if you, I, if, if it's all right with you.
Yes.
Uh, so the, the recommended FY twenty-four budget is twenty-two million, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars, which is two point five percent uh, increase from the FY twenty-three budget. So the, the, this is, this amount is the amount, is the money that the town is um, budgeting for the school department. This is local funds only, it includes um, monies uh, gathered from, from Lunenburg taxes, and it also includes uh, chapter seventy funds, so it, it's, it's a from the state and local funds make up this local budget. Chapter seventy funds, um, our amount did not go up uh, very much this year, it was a point-six percent increase uh, from last year. But as the budget stands right now, that the state funds thirty-eight point three-two percent of that budget, that local budget. The remainder is supported by uh, the, the town of Lunenburg. So I think the um, um, what, what's in this budget is, and I want to go through this, so it includes all the contractual increases um, for all of our employees. It includes the uh, six point two percent health insurance, and that's based on new current employees. Uh, the uh, transportation increase, that contract uh, increase for next year, and it includes two new positions. Um, a, a humanities teacher at, at Lunenburg High School and a, uh, an enrollment process coordinator, secretary, which is going to be used district-wide. I just want to point out that that secretary is funded half uh, on the local budget and half on uh, grants, on the uh, special education grant, so, so uh, this local budget only represents point uh, a half of a, a full-time equivalent for that uh, secretary. Over the last few uh, school committee meetings, we've uh, we've uh, proposed, and the school committee has accepted uh, extending the targeted math teacher at Lunenburg High School through um, from S R two to S R three funds. Uh, in addition, um, the psychologist uh, is going to be funded out of the special education grant next year. The THU SEL counselor, a guidance counselor, once, it's similar to the targeted math position that uh, formally on S R two is going to be extended in S R three. And as I mentioned earlier, we're, we're still looking for the um, uh, what the funding potentially may look like for the workforce uh, grant from uh, DPH, and that potentially will fund another LPN or ALPN uh, next school year. We also talked about, we made those uh, budget adjustments, uh, we're moving uh, away from the proposal of the network manager uh, from an employee to maintaining consulting services for next year. And there's a uh, grade four uh, teacher at Turkey Hill Elementary that is following uh, there's a bubble that's going through the, the, um, uh, the district right now, and that's, that's a large group, there are uh, grade four is a large group, and next year it's going to be a large uh, grade five, so that FTE is going to be shifted within the building. No impact on the budget. So, this is some new information uh, the, the, to the school committee. Uh, we did some analysis on FTEs, so an FTE is a full-time equivalent, so you, uh, it's, 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 it's not necessarily uh, one person, it's, it, so if, if someone is part-time, then it's a point five. So, school by school, uh, you'll see uh, the, the, the number of FTEs, but breaking it down, uh, the number of teachers, so the, either it could be full-time or part-time teachers, and we have a few part-time teachers in the district, paraprofessionals. Those are the number of paraprofessionals that we have in, in each building, and then other staff, and that, the other staff includes custodians, administrators, food service workers, um, secretaries. So that, and um, that twenty-one is split between the two buildings, I couldn't merge uh, that twenty-one between the two buildings, but that twenty-one is shared between the middle and the high school. So those are, those are people in the building every single day. What I think was uh, important to highlight is that school by school, there are a number of those um, employees that are funded by uh, grants and um, um, the revolving account, so that, that other staff here is, is primarily the cafeteria workers that, that are fun through, funded through the, the food service program. So, uh, in the paraprofessionals are primarily the, uh, out of our special education grant. And uh, these are the S R positions here in the title positions, these teachers. Just mentioned uh, title, uh, title grants and S R-supported positions, so uh, a, a number of those positions are focused in on a multi-tiered uh, system of support. So, uh, there, there's currently no, no local funding going to that uh, to the MTSS uh, program. Uh, but we're, uh, they're, uh, the coordinator of literacy, uh, coordinator and literacy specialist, our two reading specialists, our two t, reading teachers at the primary in uh, Turkey Hill. Currently, we have four tutors, two at the primary and two at Turkey Hill, funded by S R funds. And then we have a math specialist, which is uh, um, a, a, a district-wide position. Uh, uh, coach, uh, that, that, that goes district-wide. And approximately three hundred and ninety-two thou, uh, well, actually, two hundred and ninety-three thousand is being spent on, on those types of uh, supports for students. SEL supports. So, the, here's uh, it's, currently we have local funds and grant funds going to support the SEL uh, delivery. Uh, the seven guidance counselors uh, spread out uh, through the system. Five social workers, three psychologists. And we're also funding a um, um, the, the SNAP software, which is uh, documenting um, um, student progress and uh, work that's being done. So there, there is some uh,
Excuse me, do you mind if I ask a question?
Good.
Um, these seven guy, these are, those are full costs for those, or full, full salaries for those seven guidance counselors?
That's correct.
Okay, so just bear with me for a second, and I, I appreciate the slide, because this answers a question that I, that I raised a few weeks ago uh, to you privately, Mr. Cassidy, so I appreciate you doing this, but just to be clear, these seven guidance counselors and five social workers and these seven guidance counselors and five social workers and three psychologists are not working a hundred percent on S E L, right? They have other duties that sit outside of the S E L curriculum.
I'll jump in on that.
Okay.
Um, we have two guidance counselors at the high school level that um focus on um college and career readiness, scheduling students, preparing them for a post-secondary uh, you know, course, uh, whether that be off to college, uh, military or career. Um, however, we do have guidance counselors providing some S E L support. Um, all of our social workers are providing that S E L support. I, I want to just be clear that the S E L, we're not talking about the Trails to Wellness curriculum. We're talking about tier one, tier two, tier three intervention and support. These folks are supporting kiddos either in the S E L curriculum delivery or at the tier-two level in small group or at the tier-three level uh one-on-one sessions with, with kiddos. The same is, is true of the psychologists. It's sort of tangential uh in that the psychologists primarily are the ones that do the assessment for special education services. They do all the testing. They facilitate those I E P meetings, but they they are often also finding students eligible for um behavioral health reasons. Um, so that's why they're in there. And then that Snap software is how all of our uh behavioral health staff are documenting um the time that, that they're spending uh with these students, much like our nurses also use Snap uh to, to uh track notes uh for, for the students as well.
So just to, I, I really appreciate you breaking this down for us. Um, the two guidance counselors that you outlined in the high school, Dr. Burnham, that are oriented around career counseling, college, the, those types of activities, are they included in the seven or not?
They are. They are, they are included.
Okay, so there's some money here that's not going to S E L.
Well, these, these counselors should be available to the students on their caseload if the students uh need to have a check-in. They, they can and do uh approach their guidance counselor. Uh, it's, it's possible that they-
Availability versus time on task, and that's kind of what I'm trying to separate in my head.
Yeah, uh, of all of them, the, those two spend the least amount of time with um direct uh S E L support.
Okay, thank you.
So this is going back um many, many months ago when we, uh, we were looking at year one of the five-year staffing plan. And uh the, the, the only, the only uh position that is still unknown is that dean at the, at the high school. Uh, we're still waiting for some information on that, and the, the L P N. Uh, we're still waiting on some, um, some possibilities of alternative funding for that position, but in some way, shape or form, the, the positions that we had identified in that presentation is uh, they're, they're being addressed. And I truly hope that um that the state comes through on uh the L P N funding as well. Okay, so uh, I, I've said unknowns a number of times during this meeting. Uh, you know, we do have a reserve budget. It's, it's, in my opinion, it's appropriately funded. Uh, but we, we, uh, there's no final negotiations with the Lunenburg uh custodial union or the cafeteria worker union, and we've got uh two pending uh employee contracts. Haven't been finalized, but um it, it's um, I, I think we're on target. The superintendent and I, uh, we, we have our ears to the ground as far as any um potential uh COVID curriculum grants that are potentially coming through D C as they try to expend any um S R funds that uh they have uh allocated to their, their agency. Uh, still, still waiting for um a circuit breaker amount. Uh, we'll, we'll get that at the end of uh, end of the school year. Once again, we're not expecting any, any significant decrease in that. And then finally, our entitlement grants will be announced sometime over the summer. Uh, but by everything we're seeing, there's no major reductions uh coming from any of the title, the special educa- uh, special education grants. So you've seen this, this uh, this slide a number of times, and uh so we've got our um finance committee meeting uh, uh, on March twenty-second. At that time, uh, before that meeting, there'll be a public hearing. Before that, uh, uh, before we go into that finance committee. So this, this, uh, this slide has been updated. So the, that, that, uh, that'll be announced, Dr. Burnham? That, that, there'll be a separate uh announcement on that?
Notification went out to families.
Okay, okay. So really, the next step is March twenty-second, when there will be the official public hearing. And then uh moving into the finance committee for their presentation. Currently, that is, I'll, I'll turn the uh the floor over to the superintendent for any uh final comments.
I think that that's really all we, we have, but we're ready to um have a, a, any questions from the committee relative to the budget that we have presented. Uh, we'll make sure that the recording of this meeting is posted so that residents um of Lunenburg can watch this meeting prior to the budget hearing next week, so that they can see um, the conversation around the presentation, and of course, our slides uh are also posted and available for them as well.
Okay, does the committee have any questions? I, I just had one, and that was last year, we had that huge increase, huge for us increase in chapter seventy funding. And it did not all end up with us. Some of it ended up um to Monte Chat or to the town or wherever. It didn't come all to us, um, which I understand that's how that works. Um, are we anticipating that this year? Or, or do we know that what we are getting in chapter seventy funds actually will be used in the school budget?
Well, I'll, I'll uh I'll, I'll kind of talk about the, the math of that. Uh, the, the state's only increasing our budget uh by point six percent. That's not sixty percent. That's point six, zero point six percent.
Agreed.
And that's rounded up, uh, right? Um, so uh, the, the town's giving us a two-and-a-half percent. So you know, the, the, the state is not assisting um, um, with uh local costs. The, the, the emphasis goes back onto the town, and they're, they're filling the gap between uh the, our increase from the state, and they're filling in that hole with the, you know, the, the other um, two percent. So, yeah, we'll, this year, we're gonna, we're gonna get all of that, that, that increase and probably uh, uh, recoup some of the, the money that we didn't get last year.
Okay. Anything else? So seeing nothing, um, we will once again on this subject, meet at six-thirty on next Wednesday, March twenty-second for the public hearing. So if anyone in the public has questions about the budget, that is the time to raise them. If you send any inquiries to um Dr. Burnham before that time, we will make sure those are asked at the budget hearing. And then after that, the committee will make its final approval of this budget, and then we go to the finance committee, and we will have an approved budget hopefully to them. Yes.
Excuse me, uh, ju- just to remind the public that the, the detailed uh budget will also be posted um on our website as well, a- along with um um, the uh slide presentation, but the detail budget will be presented, oh, will be available on our website. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just as a point of um information, we did have the budget on as an action item. Um, I think uh for the record, uh, maybe we should move to uh delay a vote approving the budget until March twenty-second post-budget hearing.
Okay, it, it is listed as an action item. So um so do I have a motion to delay the approval of the budget until March twenty-second?
So moved. I make a motion to approve the delay of the budget until March twenty-second.
Oh, in a second. All right, and then a roll call vote, please?
Mister Beardmore?
Yes.
Mister Schoenbrini?
Yes, ma'am.
Mister Leighton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Um, the next item on the agenda is the budget hearing, and of course, we have decided to move that to March twenty-second. Do we have to vote on that movement? Since it does say action.
I would, I would recommend that.
It can't hurt. So do I have a motion to um cancel this evening's budget hearing due to our power outages that are all about? Did I just understand? My power just got turned on. Um, so um can we have a motion to move this evening's scheduled budget hearing to March twenty-second at six-thirty?
So moved.
And a second, please?
A second.
And then a roll call vote.
Mister Beardmore?
Yes.
Mister Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mister Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes. Okay, next on the docket here is the primary A C project.
Mister Cassidy, do you want me to screen share the slides? All right, so um this evening, we just want to bring back to you a final summary of the proposal that was discussed a few weeks back. Uh, Mister Pusiteri is on this meeting uh to answer any questions as well. So this gives you a little bit of background, uh, and again, background for the public, and um pending your decision as a committee, this would be passed along as well to um the finance committee uh just for their information as well as to the town manager. So as you know, there were, there was money appropriated uh for uh a capital project uh installation of air conditioning at the primary school. Uh, the monies appropriated were uh in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand. And that budget uh was uh based on some assumptions such as uh that we would be able to use existing uh units. Uh, but when we had the engineers in this summer, it was determined that they were uh past um a, a life uh that made sense uh to add and continue to utilize uh the existing uh mechanicals. That uh engineering group uh used consultant to come up with cost uh for uh their assessment of what needed to be done, and that came in at seven-point-nine million dollars. Uh, the claim was that that's largely due to inflationary costs. But that is not a viable option for us. Um, so we discussed with the committee a few weeks back uh the idea of installation of um split systems um for the air conditioning, but also for some supplemental um heating. You also have a summary here of um how that works. It's one condensing unit uh wood service units in, in two classrooms. You also have information here as to the number of rooms in the building that do have some air conditioning uh provided already. And we were initially looking to be able to provide air conditioning and supplemental heat in uh twenty-two classrooms and two small office spaces on the second floor. So we've been looking into the costs associated with this project, and um at this point uh we believe that the two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand will fund uh installation of air conditioning in sixteen classrooms. Uh, thirteen classrooms on the second floor and three classrooms on the first floor. Initially, we thought we might be able to um uh install for twenty classrooms, uh but Mister Pusiteri did some additional work uh around the supplemental costs in addition to the cost for the mechanicals um that we got uh this information from the vendor. Uh, so factoring in those other costs brought the uh, the classrooms down from twenty to sixteen. Um, we estimate that if we were to um provide the cooling and supplemental heat to the remaining classrooms and those two office spaces on the second floor uh would be approximately a hundred and nineteen thousand. Based on the fact that this would be disruptive, um installation of these systems would be completed um as soon as summer break uh begins, um unless there are supply chain issues, but, but we feel pretty confident in conversations with the vendors that these mechanicals are uh readily available. So the recommendation that you have to consider this evening is moving forward with this project that does accomplish um at least part of the intent of the original project that was approved at, at town meeting. This is a partial execution of that original intent, because that's what we can afford. And again, um pending your decision, and um I believe that uh will, will likely delay a vote on this until the meeting next week. Uh, but pending your decision, if you, if you choose to approve this recommendation, we would move this on to the town manager for consideration.
Hey, thank you. Does anyone have any questions about this um project? Uh, Mister Beardmore? Uh Mr. Beardmore?
Thank you for uh for bringing this to us. Um I have a procedural question and a mechanical question, I guess, or a technical question. Um without belaboring my, my frustration with the capital planning process in Lohenburg, um this money was appropriated by town meeting to do a particular thing, and that particular thing, we can't do for the money that that was appropriated. Um so this is a lesser thing that accomplishes a portion of what was previously proposed. I don't believe it's our authority as a school committee to go and spend that money on our own, because I believe the charter calls for the town manager to execute the capital plan. Again, the process is crazy in my view, but it is what it is. Um Does she have the authority to do this on her own, or, or what would be the next step after we approve this?
When we spoke with her uh mid late January, she felt that it fell within the scope of the original intent uh that was voted at town meeting, but what she was going to need was um for us to uh have school committee uh on board with, with this plan. And if you are on board with this plan, we would then be able to take it back to her uh for her consideration. She did not to my recollection, Mr. Cassidy, you were at the meeting, you may have a different recollection, she did not specify um that this would have to go back before town meeting this spring. Mr. Cassidy, do you have any recollection relative to her next steps, once we bring this back to her?
No, I think I, I interpreted the um her direction was that thi- this, this committee needs to be in line with what we're doing. Remember that the original proposal came through the school committee. Uh you, you voted on it for, for administration to, to be changing the intent, to be changing the, kind of the scope. Well, well, not really changing the intent, but just to really what uh the, the, uh some of the projects. Um I, I, I got the impression that the town manager, uh the town manager just wanted to make sure that uh the committee was, wa- was good with it. Um that they would, uh that, that they would approve moving forward with this type of project.
I, I just, I appreciate the context. I just honestly didn't know exactly what, what the deal was here. Um
If we delayed the vote until next week, um that gives us time to check with the town manager as to uh what's the course of action? If, if this is approved by the school committee, what are the next steps?
Okay, that'd be appreciated, although I think maybe even a straw man vote kind of, you know, straw poll today might be helpful to move that conversation along. Um in the presentation, Mr. Cassidy, and, and I don't, I don't know if this was intentional or not, but I was just kind of keeping, trying to keep track with, of the math here. Um you said that originally the scope was to cover twenty-two off, twenty-two classrooms and two offices. And now we're going to sixteen classrooms. But then you outlined that there were an additional seven classrooms. Um and I didn't, I, I didn't note your, any commentary about the office, offices. So I'm just, I wanna, I wanna be clear on what the balance is here. I understand the hundred and nineteen thousand dollars or whatever you cited, but exactly what are we not covering here?
Okay, um.
So we, we gave you schematic drawings as a few meetings back.
Yeah.
You could see the layout and you could see all the green uh blocks and the arrows that went to the different rooms. Uh so we're what, we are working off of that uh schematic and, and when we presented that to you, um there were two office spaces on the second floor, just, just adjacent to the um the music room, which is that larger space on the front face of the building there. You can see those two smaller spaces are the office spaces. One of those, you can see it joins to a storage room out back. Uh there is a window at the end of that uh storage area, but the next uh adjacent office to that, there is no window. So we would be looking at um installation of all of the classroom spaces on the second floor. And then we would have to make a determination as to which classrooms on the first floor. You'll see the, the room that's um highlighted there, outlined in blue. That room there shares a condenser with the ru- a, a room on the first floor. So that would be one of the rooms on the first floor.
Yep.
And that's that, that singular uh one on the courtyard side of, of the building right there. So we would have to um make a determination uh as to which, which rooms we uh we forego. Uh but my, I, I anticipate it would be the, the three rooms to the front portion of the building on the first floor. Um
The south side of the building, yeah.
Yeah, so we would probably target that um the ones that you can see down front left um would, would be a priority, I think. And then likely the two on the opposite side of the corridor. Um as you can see on the south side, at the front of the building, um there's a single unit there. Sing, it services a single classroom. And then likely we would uh forego the, the two classrooms on the other side, just uh outside of the main entrance. That's the, those classrooms down there are the um the pre-K classrooms and uh and achieve classroom, I believe.
Yep. Okay, um so just by way of commentary, first of all, I, I know an extraordinary amount of work went into this, and I, I just want to acknowledge that. Um I know Mr. Pusiteri has been doing a lot of legwork on this, and uh he and I walked through the building during February school vacation. Um and I asked a number of questions and in my view, when you, when you think about the numbers involved here, you know, where we started with what we thought was a two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar project, and it would go to a eight million dollar project. And yeah, we're, we're not gonna do this in the totality that we would like to do it with real air conditioning, particularly in the second floor of the library area and that kind of thing where it really hit, heats up. By the way, there, there is a an AC unit in the second floor of the library, but nonetheless, um it's not central air. You know, we're gonna hit sixty percent of the, of the rooms that kids are in, in that building, doing it this way. Um and sixty percent of an eight million dollar project is a whole lot more than two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. So, you know, in my view, it's not what we originally sold the town, and I, I think we need to acknowledge that and make sure that we are crossing the Ts and dotting the Is to make it very clear that this has been given a full vetting. Um I think that this goes a long way to addressing a longstanding issue with what is otherwise a very nice building. Um and, and making it a, a more hospitable place for our, for our students and faculty. And uh I'm inclined to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Beardmore. Anybody else? Mr. Leighton?
I would agree with Mr. Beardmore, uh as a former capital planning committee member too. This, this was on the capital planning agenda, and it didn't make the capital plan um several years, so it's definitely a concern for our students, um for our faculty, and I think it's important that we get the job done, but that we are transparent in the process.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
I, I think that Mr. Pusiteri's solution here, and the solution that everybody worked on, was a really creative one, and I think it saves a lot of money. The only concern I have is that when we approach Turkey Hill, that the town is gonna expect the same sort of magic, right? You know, like, they gave us two hundred and ninety thousand dollars to fix a seven, six and a half million dollar problem, and we got like sixty percent of the way there. I, I just feel like, you know, as the old saying goes, the, the reward for good work is more work. And I'm concerned that like, we won't have a realistic appraisal of our needs at Turkey Hill, given that we were able to pull this off. So I, I, I just want to make sure, and I know that everybody in the committee will remember this, but I want to make sure that when we communicate this to the town, that it's like, we got lucky here. We are not gonna get lucky again, and we should not keep counting on getting lucky, especially when we take a look at a older building that needs more significant remodeling, and as Dr. Burnham has mentioned many times, has parts that we can't even go get anymore. So I, I just want to make sure that when we communicate to the town, that's our message, like, whoo, we got lucky, this won't happen again.
Very good point. Anything else from anyone else? Um, Mr. Leighton?
Thank you. Uh yeah, I believe Mrs. Schoenbrini brings up a good point, and I think it's, it comes back to really when the buildings are built too. So if we do have a future building that we pay the today's cost versus twenty years in the future's cost, which is a lot more money.
Absolutely. So um the intent was because of the limited access to this meeting this evening, we didn't want to take this particular vote tonight. Um I could be persuaded either way, I guess, but um Mr. Beardmore's um point that going to the town manager, if, if the superintendent goes to the town manager and says the school committee is behind that, then it may lay more weight. I think you have heard that we are behind that. And I, I think that may be what we need to do this evening. Um does anybody have a thought, one way or the other?
I, I think this, you know, we have one member who's not here tonight, largely due to the weather issues that we've experienced. I would, I would prefer to table this until next week for a vote. I think the opinions of the four members you have here are, or three that have spoken on it are clear. I suspect yours are the same, Carol. And uh I think that that can be easily articulated.
Okay, Mr. Leighton?
I don't have a problem with that. I would just want to check with the superintendent and the business manager, as long as the timeline is gonna work for that, that we're not putting anything off, that we don't need to keep going in the process.
So I would um offer this thought, um Mr. Beardmore, uh couple meetings ago, last meeting um suggested that the finance committee, when we go before the finance committee, they're going to want an update on this. Um so I think as long as a vote is taken prior to that meeting, which if we take it up next week, our meeting is scheduled to happen prior to uh the start of the finance committee meeting. Um so at that point, uh we would just take it forward and, and um indicate that it was voted and endorsed by the uh school committee.
That, oh, go ahead, Brian.
I'll make a motion to table for our next meeting then.
All right. And then a roll call vote?
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you for the work on this. Um there's some very, as, as Mr. Beardmore said, uh or maybe, I don't know, somebody said very creative thoughts going into this and a lot of hard work, and we uh appreciate that, because the bottom line is um nobody learns well when it is ninety-two degrees and, and the humidity is crazy. So it's good for the building, it's good for the faculty, and overall, good for the kids. All right, next, we have first read policies. Thirty-two oh three funding proposal and applications, thirty-two oh four acceptance of gifts, grants and requests bequests, um thirty-three oh one fiscal accounting and reporting, thirty-three oh two audits, thirty-three oh seven bonded employees and officers, thirty-four oh one purchasing and purchasing authority. Um does anyone have any comments on those policies, Mr. Beardmore?
Yeah, um I, I have a question on thirty-two oh four. Um and I appreciate the, the work of the, the subcommittee and the superintendent for uh where applicable, including the um the regulation or guidance that um that pointed us to some of these changes. Um on thirty-two oh four, it references MASC file, ACD, public gifts to the schools. And my, my question is first, what is that? I mean, I assume MASC is Massachusetts Association of School Committees, but wha- what is, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees doesn't make up statute or regulations, so I'm just curious as to what, what we are um modeling ourselves to here.
Carol?
Um, yes, go ahead. Yes, absolutely.
Peter, I had the same question when I first joined. Essentially, it's like a professional organization that's made up of lobbyists, education, eh, educational professors, professionals and lawyers, and they have like um recommended language for a bunch of stuff. If you're a lawyer, it's kind of like the model penal code, where a, a non state-specific entity created a, a bunch of rules and states modeled them after it. MASC did the same thing for school districts in Massachusetts. And so some of the stuff doesn't, like, when we go through the stuff in the policy committee, though, uh Dr. Burnham and Mr. Cassidy will always tell Laura and I when stuff doesn't apply, so
Yeah.
there, it's sort of just like generic templated language.
Best practices.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sometimes.
Okay, um specific, specific to this one, and I, I asked the question for a, for a very specific reason. Um one of the things that's been added uh for the benefit of, well, it's now shared on the screen, so everybody can see it. If you go to the top paragraph, um it says, in the case of gifts from industry, business, or special interest groups, no extensive advertising or promotion may be involved in any donation to the schools. Um in my view, this is unnecessary and unenforceable. Um unnecessary, because I don't want to do anything to dissuade anybody from offering a donation to the school, even if they may use it for their own business purposes as a promotion of their goodwill and charity. Um the second piece, though, is I don't think it's enforceable, because it's a First Amendment issue. If you make a donation to the school, if Stillman's goes and donates a crate of eggs to the schools, and then puts out a billboard in front of Stillman's after the fact that says we donated eggs to the schools, there's nothing preventing them from doing so and nothing we can do to There's nothing preventing them from doing so and nothing we can do to enforce. Or, 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 or make them not do it, I, I, I think.
I think the intent here is not to have advertising on the campus or in the schools.
Okay, but that's not what this says.
That's a good point. It's how I read it as well, um, like that you weren't gonna put. If Stillman's, to use your example, you weren't gonna put their name on the baseball jerseys or something. Um. But if that. It doesn't say that, you are correct.
And Mr. Beardmore, so you know, I, I had the same issue that you did. In terms of the first year, two issues, like. I, I'm not sure we should be dissuading people from giving the school money. They want to give us money, give us money, like.
Or anything else for that matter that might be useful.
Yeah, so I, I don't know. I mean, I, I. I can see it both ways, like I don't want our kids to like. Sit down at a desk and have it, you know. Play like a Diddy from Apple.
So to be clear, I, I'm against putting advertising on our. On us. I, I, you know, to, to the extent that. You know, the, the youth sports organizations take donations and they hang up temporary banners during football games and stuff like that's there, you know. But. But I don't want, yeah, I don't want the, uh, the Beats by. You know, Dre. Uh, headphones in the school, you know, like I, I don't, I don't see a need for that, but. Or, or the advertising, you know, extensive advertising, but I, but I do think that if. Dr. Dre would make, like to make a sizable donation to the Lunenburg schools, that it would be okay with me if he told the world that he did it. So, so I, I, I just think that we might need to sharpen the language on this a little bit.
I, 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 I see the perspective in, in, uh, on that language. I think our, once again, I'll, I'll talk about intent, you know, when we get gifts, no extensive advertising may be involved in the donation. So it's, it's not, hey, we'll take all this stuff and you'll get advertising. That's, um, so like this language was, was kind of offered. Um. To us. Um, we can, you can bring it back and we can expand on that. But I think it was more of a, uh. Uh, an agreement between the schools and a, and a business that if you give us this, we'll give you advertising type of thing. If they want to, i- i- and it's, so it's, it's more of an agreement. Um, in, in expectations.
And we're not going to agree to advertising your, I, 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 I understand the point. Um, and I understand the intent. I think we need to sharpen the language in the policy.
Okay.
May I make a comment, Mr. Cassidy?
Oh, be my guest.
Okay, so we already also have a policy thirteen oh one. Which says the acceptance of gifts and offers of equipment for the schools, when the gift is of educational value. Will be brought to the school committee and recommended by the superintendent. In the case of gifts from industry, business, or specific interest groups. No advertising or promotion may be involved in any donation to the public schools. Photos and or written acknowledgement of a donation is acceptable. So we already have a longstanding policy. That's, has spoken to this. Um, I'm not sure if you wanted to, um. Make changes to both?
Let me give you an example. Uh, several years, for years ago, I worked for a company that, that did a. A, um, Mr. Santry's on the line. He, he was there when this happened. Um, we ran a contest. And a Ludenberg student won it. And we donated about a dozen computers to what was then Turkey Hill Middle School. And we came, we did an assembly, and we took a whole bunch of pictures and did all kinds of things. And we did a press release afterwards, which included a quote. Probably from Mr. Santry. Um, and we included the name of the school as a donation recipient on a whole bunch of other additional marketing that we did. By promoting this program. It was an annual thing that we did. Um. I don't want to dissuade anybody, Luna, Lunenburg's participation in those kinds of programs, and I don't want to dissuade anybody from. From considering Lunenburg as a recipient for those kinds of programs. Um, and I, I think that the language that you just read, uh, Mrs. Peterson. Could potentially do exactly that if it surfaced.
And I, I understand completely what you're saying. I just wanted to make. The whole committee aware that we have had a longstanding policy of this. Um, that had that language in it. So what we choose to do from this point, um, that's up to the committee.
And if I could just add, thank you, Ms. Peterson, I, it, it, it has cleared my mind on what this language is, and really, it's. It's a, it's around acceptance. So. If, when we accept gifts, there, there is no. Uh, there can be no advertising, uh, be involved in that donation, so there's no. Um, uh. There's no side agreement, like, we'll accept that if, and we'll give you advertisement. Th- this is, this. I, I read this policy as just part of the acceptance. Where we have Ms. Peterson's, uh, uh, policy that I think is thirteen oh. Thirteen hundreds, uh, is really the process of accepting. Or the, the process of, of gifts. So, we. We can bring it, we can bring it back to the, the, the policy subcommittee. We can definitely tighten that up. Um, and we'll make sure it's consistent with the, the, um, with the other policy.
I, I think that's probably the best thing to do. Uh, I didn't pick it up upon my read of this policy, but. I would agree with Mr. Beardmore, that could be read a couple of different ways. So we want to make that to be a little clearer.
Carol, can I ask Mr. Beardmore a question?
Sure.
So, Mr. Beardmore, I, I think you're right about the First Amendment issue for them advertising. So if we had the language say, in the case of gifts from industry, business, or special interest groups, no extensive advertising or promotion. On school district grounds or property may be involved in any donation to the school. Is that, like, is that what you're looking at?
Exactly.
That fix it?
Yeah.
Something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Do we, the other thing is, is there any interest in a debate about? Whether we do this. On campus advertising, because like I went to a, I went to a Catholic school in Ohio for high school. And everything, because they needed the money, was sponsored by somebody. You know, our, our soda machines were sponsored by Gem Vending, our, you know, when we had fish fries, they were sponsored by. For Friday, uh, Lenten lunches, they were sponsored by a fish place. I mean. It, I don't have any interest in doing that, but I also could, if somebody made like a really super compelling argument that it would bolster. You know, our coffers in a way that would improve student achievement, I, I'd be hard pressed to say no. I just, I just, do we want to have that debate is the question, not what's your position on the debate?
Um, I think that might be a topic for another day, Mr. Scull.
Okay, that's fine.
But, um, it's an interesting thought for sure.
I, I would, I think that exploring a, the, the, the thing about that sort of thing, Mr. Scull and Briny is. It would need to, there would need to be a program associated with it, right?
Right.
Yeah. It's not, I, I don't think it's just a policy thing. I think it's an initiative, right?
Okay.
And I, I don't think we can deal with it. Strictly as a policy.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so, um, this particular policy first read, we're going to send back where the others are, right?
I was okay with the others.
Is there anything else we need to change?
Just that part is what we've talked about, just that first paragraph.
Okay.
Making that clarification, and then, um, we probably would need to look at the other policy that Mrs. Peterson referenced. And make sure that was also clear. At some point, not this minute. But at some point. Um. So what would we, we would need is a motion to waive the first read of. Um. Policies thirty-three oh two, thirty-three oh seven, thirty-four oh one, thirty-three oh one, and thirty-two oh three.
I'll, I'll make the motion to waive the first reading of the, of the policies so listed. And have them return, at least this one, return to the policy committee. Is that what you mean, Carol, when you say waive the reading?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
All right, then a roll call vote?
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Scumbriny?
Yes.
Delating?
Yes.
Yes. So next we have second read of policies dealing with finance. Um. Number thirty-one oh three budget adoption, number thirty-one oh one budget planning. And the other one is flying here, number thirty-one oh four fiscal year budget planning and schedules. We did waive the first reading, uh, we waving the second read. Did we have any comments on any of these policies, Dr. Burnham?
I don't believe we do. Liz, can you verify that last check today that there was nothing on the second read policies?
Yes, I'm verifying that there were, were no comments about any of the policies.
That being the case, um, do I have a motion to waive the second read of those policies?
I move that we. Waive the second read of policies thirty-one oh three, thirty-one oh one, and thirty-one oh four.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, then a roll call vote?
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Scumbriny?
Yes.
Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Josh Hamble?
Yes. All right, that brings us to the third read policies, and these policies we will read. Um, aloud. The first one is the concession stand policy, number thirty-seven oh one point oh three. So, um, usually that falls to the policy committee person, Mr. Scull and Briny, you up for reading the policy?
Yes, if, if, uh, somebody could put up the latest one on the. Screen, that might be helpful.
I got it if you want me to do it.
You got it.
She's got it.
That's the, we have a clean copy.
Uh, fiscal management and non-instructional operation, three thousand food services, thirty-seven hundred. Lunenburg food services thirty-seven oh one concession stand policy thirty-seven oh one point zero three. The Lunenburg Public School concession stand will be a retail operation as specified in one oh five. Uh, Code of Mass Regulations, uh, five ninety point zero 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 one. Purpose and definition, C, food establishments, section three, subsection A, an establishment that offers only prepackaged foods. The business office will pull a permit. Uh, for the concession stand, food preparation is not allowed. All groups can sell prepackaged food. Groups that wish to sell time-temperature controlled foods must have one member of their organization. Safe serve manager certified, and that manager must be present during the operation of the concession stand. Concession stand coordinator will manage, uh, keys to the concession stand. I'm sorry, the concession stand coordinator will manage keys to the concession stand. Organizations will provide copies of safe service certificates when signing out a key. The organization will receive a copy of the concession stand policy and concession stand. Standard operating procedure at the time of the request. For use of the stand and the organization must return a signed acknowledgement of policy and procedures. Requests for the concession stand usage must be submitted to the district's facility permitting system. Schedule requests will not be approved without signed acknowledgement on file. Limited lockable storage will be available for seasonal or non-perishable items. Seasonal or. Of non-perishable items. The clo- closet and storage locks will be keyed differently, but will have a master key. That the concession stand coordinator will maintain at the end of each season. All food and drink items must be removed. The fall, the fall sports season removal deadline. Is five P M. On the Monday following Thanksgiving of each year, the spring sports season removal is five. P M. On the second Friday of June each year. Any food or drink items found in the concession stand beyond these dates or at the end of a single per, event permit. Will be disposed of by the school district. A five hundred dollar fee will be assessed to any user which results in the cleanup. And or disposal of items, food left behind. All facility fees collected from operation of the concession stand will be used to maintain or improve the operation of the concession stand. Number one, booster clubs, extracurricular clubs, outside organizations, or classes. Are required to schedule concession stand events through the district's online permit system. The athletic director and superintendent of schools will approve event requests. Number two, all foods must be sold, uh, all food sold must be in compliance with the menu guidance. Detailed in the standard, standard operating procedures. Manual, a menu options. There is no cooking at the concession stand or on school grounds. Homemade food is not allowed. Organizations are required to determine the number of volunteers to operate the concession stand, but at least one volunteer. Must hold a safe serve food manager certificate. When time-temperature controlled foods are sold and or over the age of. And or be over the age of eighteen. All volunteers working the concession stand must be above the age of fourteen. Organizations will manage all operations of the concession stand during an event. Including instruction and assigning all volunteers in specific duties and shifts required. Organizations will maintain a log of volunteers who worked the stand. Who worked the stand for each event. Volunteers must stay to clean up empty trash cans, put away equipment, turn off all lights, and secure the facility. Organizations are responsible for monitoring the behavior of, sorry, monitoring behavior of volunteers. And are this, are the. Arbitrators of disputes involving volunteers and or customers. Organizations are responsible for ensuring the volunteers follow the rules set forth. For use of school facilities in the district's facilities, policy, and concession stand SOPs. The organizations will be monitored by the concession stand coordinator. Organizations that pose repeated problems who violate Board of Health regulations are found cooking on site without a certified manager. Are found selling items that are not allowed and or who fail to show up for the agreed-upon scheduled event. May be banned for participation, participating in the concession stand for the remainder of the season. Forty-eight hours notice is required for cancellations. Uh. Won't we, oh, no, I think that's taken out. Organizations will keep clean. Will keep equipment clean and report any problems or mechanical issues to the business manager. Or concession stand coordinator within twenty-four hours. Uh, adopted, and then insert date, and then page two of two.
Thank you, Tony. Um, just a couple of quick things. We have to get rid of that, won't we? Also banned for violations. There is another weird spot, number three. Where it says, um. At least one volunteer must hold a serve safe food manager certificate. When time-temperature controlled foods are sold and or be over the age of eighteen. Wouldn't that be and be over the age of eighteen? Is that or supposed to be there?
I, I think it should be and. The intent wasn't for it to be and.
To be both.
Yeah.
So we have to strike that or, and there was one other spot towards the, here it is, towards the. Where it says limited lockable storage will be available for seasonal or of. Non-perishable items. Did that mean? Limited lockable storage will be available for seasonal storage of non-perishable items?
Yes.
Okay, so that, those need to be fixed. Um. I don't think, I think there were typos. I don't think that changes the final read of the. Um, policy. Does anybody think it does?
No.
Okay. All right. So then there is one more.
I did. Carol? I did have, uh, just some feedback too, uh. So we had our athletic advisory meeting, uh, and one member had commented that they read the policy. And they just wanted to highlight that there was a difference, um, in the past, it was a safe serve. Um. Handler, and now in the language of, um, the policy, it's a safe serve manager. So that member of. So that member of our policy, uh, of our athletic advisory just wanted to make aware, uh, of the changes. Um, I think the assumption was that it needed to be done, um, for the safety of. You know, the, the community, the people serving. That a manager would be needed, but I think a lot of the groups and organizations that have done this in the past usually only have a handler, safe serve. So I think it's gonna be really important that the school work with all the, the organizations that are gonna be going through. Uh, and using the. The snack shack that they are aware that they need to make sure that they have a safe serve manager. Um, if they want to serve the hot foods, I don't think there's a, a need for a change in the policy. But it's just important that we communicate the, the changes to all the, uh, the users.
Can you tell me what the differences?
Yes.
Between a handler and a manager?
No, I think it's different.
I, I think it's a higher level of, uh, training. Um, it, keep in mind that up until this point. Uh, we have not had all of the equipment that we're going to have in the concession stand available.
Do we know? We know what kind of difference in burden that actually. Translates to in terms like. Training time or cost or anything associated with that?
I don't have figures on that.
Hi, good evening, this is Dave King. I was actually hired by the school district as the snack shack coordinator. I could speak to that if you'd like.
Sure.
So Dave King, Three Caves Place. The food manager requires, uh, certification from the state of Massachusetts. There is a ten to twenty hour training course, it's approximately a hundred and eighty dollars. The food service person. Is an hour or two training course, it's twenty-five dollars. There are significant differences in what you learn. In the manager's course, you're overseeing food safety from time and temperature control to facility, um, facilities. To allergens, pathogens, a number of. Uh, overall safety, uh, concerns.
Thank you.
Do we, uh, is the, the classification of a manager versus a handler, was that a? Who made the decision of one versus the other in, in terms of how this was constructed?
Nadine Lorenzen has been doing all of this work in coordination with the Board of Health.
Well, I guess my question is not, it is really that, is this a? Did we land on manager as a result of Board of Health direction? Or was this a, a, um. Judgment call that was made by somebody that is under our purview?
I can go back to Ms. Lorenzen and verify that, but I would suspect that she would not be looking to put any additional barriers before. Uh, the organizations that are using it if it weren't necessary. Mr. Cassidy, do you have any additional information on that?
No, I think, I think, um, it's our intent that, 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 that an organization would have somebody testing food. For temperature. And our concession, our concession stand monitor would go out and verify those temperature checks and making sure that.
The, the, the process is not in question, what is in question is, is the level of certification and training of the, of the. The supervisor that. Each organization is now required to provide if they are going to run these types of foods in the. In the snack shack. So. I, I, I would appreciate it. And I don't know if this means that poor Mr. School and Brini is gonna have to go and read this thing again in another meeting. But I would appreciate if we could get some clarification on this because this is in my mind. This is already. Overreach, it's already regulatory overreach in my view, and I understand. That we're, our hand is forced by the Board of Health that does not apply regulations. Evenly across the state of Massachusetts, and that is a statement of fact. So our Board of Health. Our sticklers, and I understand that. We, we are forced on a number of, in a number of different ways. To really restrict what we're doing here. And, and I would, if at all possible. Be looking to hit the absolute minimum in terms of the burden that we're putting on, on our organizations. That are using the snack shack.
I can appreciate your, your comments, Mr. Beardmore. I would wanna make sure nobody gets sick. If, if that was what, you know, I, I, I'd be curious to see if it is a Board of Health regulation. I, I have been in, in circumstances where in order to do. A six hour thing, people have had to do twelve hours of training to be approved by the state. For similar things like this, um.
I, I can tell you firsthand, Mrs. Archimbo, that. The, the oversight and compliance with snack shacks that are in our Neshoba district.
I understand.
Is uneven.
I, I.
And our local Board of Health, wa- our sticklers on this, I wanna know just wha- what is the minimum? And if a manager is the minimum, then so be it. But if it's not, then I don't want it to be the manager.
Um, other thoughts, Mr. Leighton? Do you have any other thoughts on this?
I, I would agree with Mr. Beardmore, I do have concerns about this and the, uh, the price mentioned too is a little alarming too, that this is gonna be put on the boosters as well. Um, my, my initial thought after hearing this too is I, I hate to have policies be very detailed like this where this could be an easy. Procedural thing in a manual that the, the district has. Uh, I think we're getting too much into the details.
Thoughts, Mr. School and Brini?
I mean. I think that when it comes to people's safety, I'm not a fan of the bare minimum. And I know that like a lot of this has to do with the fact that the law is not evenly enforced across people. But. I think that we should. Assume that the law will be enforced strictly for purposes of protecting the district. In terms of liability and protecting people that would come to our events in terms of just making them happy. The other thing that I, I think is that. The policy, and this is explained to me in the policy subcommittee meeting. The policy was basically generated in response to two different forces, one was. The Board of Health. And then the other one was prior issues that arose. From uses of a snacks, snack shack, and I, I don't know. What those things were, we didn't get into like, you know, on March fifteenth, this incident happened. We basically just went, you know, and talked about, uh, issues that had happened in the past, they were trying to. Put a stop to, and I don't know how to, to strike a balance between those two things, like I. I think that safety is important. But I also think that like the school district should not be saddled with the cost of disposing of things and cleaning up a facility. And by having, uh, a list of who did what, when, we can hold or attempt to hold people accountable. And if we don't wanna do that. As a, as a school committee, that's, that's fine. But I think that we would probably have to have something more explicit than just like. You know, we need to do the bare minimum because like I, I, that's not guidance for writing a policy, that's like. You know, a big picture thing, like what, what would we take out, like? If we can get away with having, uh, something less than a, a safe serve manager. Like what's the next step down, I, I don't know what the answer is, but I, I think that like. The policy was, was written the way it was because we, we have edicts from on high. And past presidents from below. And the result is what we see here, which I agree is like really complicated. Like it should not be this complicated, but. The less complicated or the, the less strict we make it. The more potential there is for abuses and. You know, I don't want us to spend five hundred dollars to throw away a bunch of stuff that was left. At the snack shack when that money could be better spent on, you know. Books for kids. So I think that's, that's where I'm coming from, I don't think that it's right or wrong, and I don't think that anybody's position is right or wrong. It's just that's why the policy is the way it is. And Dr. Burnham or Mr. Cassidy or Liz, please correct me if I'm wrong about how we got to where we were.
No, I think, I think that that's accurate. Um. I'm, I'm, as we speak, trying to get some information from Ms. Lorenzen.
And to be clear, I, I, I think Mr. Leighton and I may have a slightly different, different points of view on. I, my issue is specifically with the burden. Associated with certification and time of a volunteer. So not only are we gonna spend a hundred and eighty some odd dollars. Twenty hours of a volunteer's time is a substantial amount of time in addition to all the time that. He or she is gonna spend in the snack shack during games and whatnot, so. It, it's, it's becoming very burdensome for these volunteer, volunteers, they, these are people that are not. Getting paid, by the way, we are paying somebody, we have added a position to make sure that. We are enforcing these things and we're, we're, we're doing right by the policy once we adopt it. But, but the volunteers that are in there on an hour to hour basis. Nobody's paying them and, and their volunteer hours are going directly into programs that are supporting our kids.
And just for a point of clarification, we are not paying somebody to be on site.
No, no, I understand that.
The duration.
Dr. Burnham, I understand that, but I voted to support a stipend a few weeks ago for, for, for the role that I just referred to.
So I think probably what we need to do here because clearly we are, we are divided in our thoughts.
So I ha- I have a point of clarification from Ms. Lorenzen, she indicates that with a lesser certification. Per the Board of Health. They would only be able to serve prepackaged food.
Well, that's where we've been, so.
So, so the difference would be the pizza and the hot dogs? Is that, is that the difference?
Yep.
And ma- and if I, if I could just say something, I, I, I was, I, I was involved in a meeting. A while ago, uh, I think it was last fall. And. We, we rolled out the idea that someone from each organization would have to be serve safe certified. To, 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 to serve the, the additional, the, the, the better food, right, the, the more attractive food. Um, in that, that small group. Uh, seemed amenable to that, so thi- this is, this is some new information. That, uh, that I'm hearing tonight on this and.
Um, I, I'm not representing anybody, by the way, here, Mr. Cassidy, right, I'm, I'm representing Pete Beardmore's. Thoughts on this, having worked in a snack shack quite a bit over the course of the last several years. And being very friendly with people who are regularly in snack shacks. Um, in, in support of our programs and, and that is purely the source of my, of, of my questions and, and comments here. Um, and, and if. If it is what it is, which, you know, Superintendent Burnham's, uh, comments seem to be. It is what it is, see the, you know, uh, see the, uh. Uh, Board of Health, then, then so be it, I, I. Clearly have a beef with the Board of Health, but I don't think that that is something that we can. Resolve in a school committee meeting, so.
Fair enough.
And just as a point of clarification. Boosters are not going to be required. To have that level certificate and required to then serve the hot food. They can opt not to do that, additionally, they don't necessarily have to have somebody in their organization certified as a manager. If they know somebody who. It has already gotten that manager's certificate and is willing to be on site for, uh, an event that they wanted to. Be able to serve the, the hot food.
So. Does this, does this as written? Does this clearly indicate that option?
I don't, I don't know that we need to clearly indicate that option in a policy. As much as.
As that we need to have somebody that's a manager. So either you have a manager or you don't have a manager, if there's a decision around hot food or no hot food, can they use a snack shack and serve non-hot food, is that allowed?
As long as they have someone with them that has that, that certificate, then they're all set.
Okay.
Somebody with that certificate would have to be present.
For the hot food.
For the hot food.
But there's a lesser option that there's no hot food and you can use a snack shack and not have a man.
Yep.
Then that either needs to be indicated in the policy.
It's in this, it's in the procedure, the operating, uh, manual.
Then should we take the hot food service, uh, manager person? And put them in the procedure manual as well?
It states in the policy when time temperature controlled foods are.
Yeah.
And then item number three.
And it is, and it is in the procedure already.
Okay.
I'm dying to know why Peter has a beef with the Board of Health.
Yeah, I, I'll tell you straight up. We are in the Neshoba Board of Health region. Which is headquartered in Air Massachusetts. And they have a very nice facility now, and I don't know exactly what the standards of the facility that they have. But for years and years and years, you could go up and buy a hamburger, a cheeseburger or a hot dog off of a grill. A, a, a consumer gas grill outside of their snack shack. And eat to your heart's content. And in Lunenburg, you can't do that.
And I will just say that we did follow up on your inquiry. Uh, and the Board of Health knows of no organization that, uh, is authorized to be serving. Uh, hot food.
And you can go all over the state of Massachusetts and find exactly what I just described.
And they can be filed on and then shut down too.
Well, we can't settle that tonight.
No, I understand.
Settle is whether or not we're passing this policy. So we see, seem to know where the, where this came from, Mr. Leighton?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept policy thirty-seven oh one dash oh one, oh three as read.
And a second, please.
I'd second.
And a roll call vote.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. School and Brini?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo.
Yes. All right, now we have our third read of the transportation policy. Mr. School and Brini, do you wanna do this one or would you like someone else to?
I, I'll do this one, it's fine with me, if we could put it up so everybody could see it, that'd be great. Fiscal management and non-instructional operations, three thousand, transportation, thirty-six hundred. Transportation duties and responsibilities of the school committee thirty-six oh one. The purpose of the school transportation, uh, the purpose of school transportation is to get pupils from home to school and back in a safe and inefficient. Safe and economical manner. Other purposes include the provision of transportation for academic field trips. In direct support of the curriculum, transportation for the support of the co-curricular programs. Athletics, music, drama and the like. Lunenburg Public Schools does not provide transportation for pre-school students unless this service is required by the student's. Individualized education plan, I E P. Pursuant to state law and regulation, all students K through six living more than two miles from school are entitled to busing. The Lunenburg Public Schools will be, will bus all K through six students upon submission of a transportation form. State law does not require busing of students grade seven through twelve, but Lunenburg Public Schools will bus these students. Based on space available and the submission of a transportation form. Transportation form. Families wishing for their students to be bused shall submit a transportation form for each student seeking busing by the deadline of May first. Failure to submit a transportation form by the deadline will result in the student being placed on a waiting list in order of receipt. Because of the complexity of bus routes, students will be, students on waiting lists may not be assigned a bus seat for up to sixty business days. Following the late transportation form submission. Families should not expect a waitlist update more frequently than once per two weeks. Stu- should the number of s- grade, should the number of grade seven through twelve applicants exceed the number of available seats? The district will determine bus assignment on a first come, first served basis. Transportation forms received for new students moving into the district after May first, after the May first deadline, but at the time of a student of student registration shall be considered without penalty or delay based on availability of bus seats. Additional procedural details will be found in the Lunenburg Public School Transportation Form Procedure available on the district website. Emergency transportation form. In the event of a newly arising condition that necessitates busing of a student after the transportation form deadline, the district shall consider such transportation forms in their sole discretion. Outreach. The school district, based on known need, shall conduct individual outreach to families that may be unable to complete the transportation form. Finality of decision. All transportation form decisions by the school district are final. Conflict and severability. Nothing in this policy shall be interpreted as conflicting with state or federal law or regulations. In the event that some provision of this policy is deemed unlawful, all other provisions shall be given their full force and effect.
Thank you, Mr. School and Brini. So um did we receive anything from any parents or citizens regarding this policy?
No, I have not received anything regarding this policy.
All right, then. Are we all set to vote on this policy? Any other comments from the committee?
There's a member of the public.
Peter and Carol.
I'm I'm so you're welcome. Um, there is a member of the public I it's really not time for public comment. But because of the screwy way that we've had to go very quickly with this, I will permit the public comment, Mr. Brenner.
Uh, thank you very much, and my apologies uh for not understanding the correct time for public comment on this policy. Um, we uh we reviewed this policy within my household and um we we found uh it, we found some concerns in terms of equity and accessibility uh for members, both for members of our community who may be un- underprivileged, as well as in some instances, even possibly bad for families who hit within that, I don't know what the term would be, averagely privileged. Um. Uh, first of all, I want to comment that the having the outreach component included is great. Thank you very much. That's going to be key for many families. The district has already identified. Um, but having a very firm date that is four that is four months before the start of school means that five months before uh the start of school, families need to already have their childcare locked in uh locked and written in stone. Um, and that isn't uh for uh for a good swath of our community, that is not necessarily a doable thing. Um, families with lower job security can't guarantee that uh whatever their transportation needs are now are going to be similarly reflected five, six months from now. Uh, eight months from now, heading into the next school year. Uh, families with limited English proficiency, we I are most likely addressed through the outreach, and that is a a good point. But even families with two working parents uh are doubly impacted by this. They don't have extra flexibility um within their schedules, within their budgets for if the school cannot provide busing. Um, as well as frankly, um hard deadlines are not for are not friendly to parents, uh to families with parents who are neurodiverse. Taking all of this into account, uh we would urge the committee to consider a a softer and less strict less strict deadline. Now, I understand that there's the uh there's the emergency transportation form that can be submitted. But putting another hurdle in front of more disadvantaged families does not make their lives better. When we have the option of creating a process that is more accessible from the get-go and could potentially be more fluid. I understand that that is a more frustrating um thing to plan for, and I respect that. But we need to consider those families adequately. Please give me one moment. I want to make sure I've hit the topics in my notes. I I do believe that's it, just that having a firm deadline is not good for many members of our community that could have big changes and then having to rely on the hope the district will be able to give busing later in the year when their work situation changes um is intangible. And if Lunenburg is as a town is meant to be accessible, and if our school district is meant to be accessible to all families, we need a policy for busing, one of the key aspects, getting the kids into the school that reflects that as well. I wish I could give you uh some hard wording on there, but I don't know all the backend gears that would have to turn to make that effective. Uh, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brenner. So um in keeping with I I have to say, I don't believe that Mr. Brenner brought up anything we hadn't discussed at one point or another. We have discussed this policy from here to eternity. Um the balance between being flexible, incredibly flexible as we have been and turning it the whole bus company and the families at the last minute is what that ends up being, and we can't be doing that again. I would I would just stress that we do intend on this outreach piece to do so. Any families that for any reason we think would have difficulty getting this done, we will make sure and meet meet their needs, and that is the intention here. And if that does not come off that way, if somebody knows someone that was whose needs were not met in that manner, they need to let us know. And I would then ask for a motion to approve this policy. Unless there's further discussion amongst the.
Could I?
Mr. Beardmore?
So um many of the issues that Mr. Brenner brought up tonight um were discussed at length uh over the course of the last several months. Um, and I I want to bring back just for the public's awareness, the reason why we're doing this is really because the the rate, the Walker's radius is no longer tenable in Lunenburg, nor is it safe. Um, and as a result of that, as we went through the changes of the last year and different um uh u- utilization rates on buses as we moved back and forth from from, you know, pre-COVID to COVID to post-COVID. Um, we we came to the realization that our needs had changed a little bit. Um, but also that there was an opportunity to utilize our resources more efficiently and effectively. And and what that essentially means is is that we have eleven buses that we think that we can utilize to transport every kid that needs to be transported. Um, but in order to do that, we need to put in place a process by which we can plan and manage around that. Um, and so I personally view this exactly as Mrs. Arshinbo said, it was a balancing act to figure out how to get there. And there was a lot of conversations about how to do this in the most equitable way possible. Um, and it it isn't perfect. My experience in not having hard deadlines as a parent of Lunenburg kids um is soft deadlines are ignored to the last minute, and then we're back to where we were back in August, which is in a really bad place uh when it came to to managing our our bus schedules. Um, so I I I absolutely hear and feel the concerns. I actually think that where we are right now in comparison to where we were a month or two ago is a much more palatable um policy, uh certainly for me uh who who actually had raised a few of the concerns that that Mr. Brenner raised. Uh, and so it isn't perfect. There are going to be problems with it, but I think that this is the best solution for now.
Anyone else? Then could I have a motion regarding the transportation policy?
I'll make a motion to approve the transportation policy as Brett.
I'll second that motion.
And a roll call vote? Oh, you're muted.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
The School and Brini?
Yes.
Lightning?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes. And thank you for everyone who put in so much work and for the comments this evening, Mr. Brenner. I appreciate that. Um. This this was a real tough policy. And and nobody is dancing in the streets that we got it perfect because we know we don't, but it is hopefully way better than it was. So next on the agenda, I believe is uh committee reports. Are there committee reports from anyone? And Mr. Layton?
Thank you. Uh, the athletic advisory met uh Monday, March sixth uh to approve the spring uh fundraisers. Uh, we heard from the athletic director, uh just some updates too. He was uh in the process of trying to hire a fall football coach lining up that. Uh, there was also discussion that the the scoreboard company had fixed fixed the scoreboard uh per their contract at no cost. Um, one of our athletic advisory members, Robin Birch, inquired about um covering up the scoreboard advertisement where there was like a a former company um real estate company that had a advertisement on the scoreboard, possibly covering up with a like a magnet of a a blue knight over the old advertisement. Um, so the superintendent recommended that we could bring that to the school committee as a future topic for discussion. Um. Additionally, the superintendent was at the meeting to help um talk about um the budget, school budget, and what boosters um can help cover costs such as like huddle, uh the senior sweatshirts, travel gear, banners, things like that. But really, the school budget is going to cover uniforms and jerseys, helmets, et cetera, and and the needs of the program, not the wants. Um, there was a couple fundraising requests, the Boys and Girls that cross calendar fundraiser was approved, and the track and field raffle basket fundraisers were also approved. The superintendent gave a snack shack update. Uh, she talked about the many additions that were uh taking place, the new hand washer, grease traps, the refrigerators, two microwaves, the hot dog roller, the warmers, tables, sinks and stainless steel tables. And the school planned to paint and seal the floor um weather permitting uh when the weather was warmer. Um, and our next meeting is on Monday, June twelfth, uh in preparation for the fall.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Um, I okay, go ahead.
Sure. Um, thank you. Um, the high school uh advisory committee met um last Thursday, I believe. I'm sorry, my, I don't have the calendar uh in front of me. Um, and uh we got a uh an update on um an audit um relating to equity issues, which uh I believe all of the the school advisory committees uh will be getting over the course of the uh next few weeks. Um, that that had some interesting um information in it. Um. And uh we also uh we also uh discussed some 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 other items that I I won't believe you that tonight, um but uh but it was a good meeting. Um. I also want to just mention during committee reports, uh a- as a member of the uh the capital planning committee. Um. There has not been a capital planning committee meeting. There will be likely before the end of the month to to approve a final capital planning report for the warrant. Um, however, I just wanted to make everybody aware because of the the funding issues from from free cash um that it free cash has been reserved uh as a result of this tax debacle that's going on and the need to buttress the overlay account to to account for um some amount of approved um reassessments of of properties. Um, the town manager announced last week that she is capping the amount of the set aside from capital planning uh from from free cash, excuse me, uh to one point five million dollars. Um, which still leaves a fairly significant balance of free cash uh from this year, some of which will be put to uh the capital plan. She advised the finance committee last week that that would be um approximately five hundred thousand dollars, potentially more. Um, and if that were to come to fruition, if you look at the next items on the capital plan that aren't currently funded uh by her recommendation, uh it would include the theoretically would include the Turkey Hill uh fire alarm system. Uh, so I reached out to her via email for clarification this week, and she indicated that um she has not updated her recommendation that there's still some work to do, including accounting for the school department budget um as part of the overall budget, but that um an update to that recommendation would be forthcoming.
Thank you. That's good news. And actually, from the finance committee, um that was my one tidbit of information that I had. Most of it were about other departments um presenting their budgets. So um so that takes care of my report too. Thank you so much. So if that's it on committee reports, then we have one more public comment section if anyone wishes to make a comment. Seeing, oh, Mr. Brenner, go right ahead.
I just wanted to say uh thank you again to the chair for taking my comment earlier, as well as thank you to Mr. Beardmore for the additional context on the decision.
Thank you. We appreciate it. So um topics for future discussion. At our next meeting, of course, we will be um approving the budget. Um, we're approving a budget to go forward. And then we also have to um take a vote on the primary AC, and that'll be next Wednesday at six thirty via Zoom for anybody that would like to uh take a look at that. And otherwise uh future topics, our next meeting after that isn't until um like April fifth or something. It's quite a ways out. We we have a bullying discussion to be had, and that may be a good time to be doing that. We may have time on that. We'll have to take a look and see.
Another topic for future discussion was the the scoreboard.
Yeah, and the scoreboard. Thank you.
When um do we have a uh a planned uh winter sports update on the calendar?
Winter. I don't have.
Usually we do an end of season update on the sports season.
We we don't we don't schedule it that way. Um, we schedule the opening of each new season with updates on numbers, but if you want to have some sort of summary of the winter season, I can request that as well.
So on the original calendar, we had a spring athletic report uh for the March fifteenth meeting, which is today. Uh, I I understand we vary from the the original plan. Um, but I I think um you know, in the past, we've done a review of numbers uh for the sports programs, which I think is is good to do, but um I I don't believe our new A D has uh has surfaced at a school committee meeting yet, and uh I think it would be good for him to introduce himself and and share some overall impressions of our athletics program.
Okay.
I can ask for him to be present. Um, typically, you know, he's um
at at sporting events.
Managing uh events in the evening. Managing uh, events in the evening. Um, he, we did bump uh, the report until the fifth uh, because uh, tryouts and such are not going to be completed in time for today's meeting, so.
This is an early second meeting in March. So, yeah. So if there isn't anything else, then I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
All righty then. And a roll call vote?
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Brini? Mr. School and Brini?
Yes.
Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes. Have a good evening, everyone. We'll see you next Wednesday.
Thank you.